Well, good morning, El Paso, and good morning, City Council. We are ready to go to work. Ms. Prime?
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
Good morning. This is a meeting of the El Paso City Council for Wednesday, January twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five. Mayor Johnson is present and presiding along with Mayor Protem Chavez, Representative Acevedo, Representative Rocha, Representative Trejo, Representative Niño, Alternate Mayor Protem Fierro, and Representative Limón. It is nine o'clock A.M. Will everyone please silence our electronic devices so as not to disturb the meeting? And rise for the invocation delivered by El Paso Police Chaplain, Robert Hempeel Jr.
Good morning to the Honorable Mayor Johnson, Mayor Protem Chavez, and all council members. And I see my special friend, Ms. Limón, let's say hello to all of you, and also to the department heads and members of the El Paso community. Let us bow our heads before the invocation. Heavenly Father, we come before you today in the City Council meeting seeking your guidance, wisdom, clarity in this meeting. First Corinthians fourteen, chapter and forty, verse says, "Do all things decently and in an orderly manner." We ask that your Holy Spirit be present among us, guiding our decisions for the common good and ensuring that we serve the best interests of our great city, El Paso. Open our minds and hearts to new ideas and help us work with integrity. Help us set aside any professional differences and work together in unity, ensuring that our efforts reflect your will for a better community. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, we pray. Amen. Thank you.
And this morning, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, we have students from Alicia Chacon International School at the invitation of City Representative Lily Limón. We have Pablo Herrera Villarreal, Rebecca Herrera Villarreal, Abigail Herrera Villarreal, and Jimena Herrera Villarreal.
Thank you.
And for the record, Representative Canales joined the meeting at nine oh three A.M.
Before they leave, Mayor Johnson, I just wanted to let you know that probably about twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen, when were you all born? What year? Twenty-thirteen? In twenty-thirteen, these quadruplets were born. Their father is, um, was working in our Transportation Department and then has now moved on to the Fires Department. Mom is an outstanding teacher, not only a teacher, but a Teacher of the Year. And so I have known these four little babies. We actually had a baby shower for them. Uh, Mom was going through thirty-six diapers a day on a regular day. And so the prax, we call them the prax, Pablo, Rebecca, Abigail, and Jimena have become real good friends of ours, and it just gives me great pleasure that that they were able to come and join us. They're students at the Alicia R. Chacon School. The girls are learning English, Spanish, and French, and Pablo, English, Spanish, and Chinese. Thank you very much for joining us, guys. Adios. Thank you, Representative Limón, and we're gonna go into the mayor's proclamations?
Yes, sir. That brings us to the mayor's proclamations. For those of you receiving a proclamation this morning, your group will have up to six minutes collectively to speak at the podium. The first proclamation is Women's Fund of El Paso Day.
Representative Limón, would you mind? Gentleman has it today. Okay, we're switching.
Thank you, Mayor. I have the honor of, uh, reading this if there's anybody in the audience that would like to come up. Hi, Celeste. Um, so I'll, I'll read the proclamation, then any could have some remarks. Thank you. So whereas the findings to the two thousand and four study El Paso Portraits: Women's Lives, Potential, and Opportunities revealed significant issues of income disparity and educational gaps among women in El Paso. And whereas the Women's Fund of El Paso was founded in response to study and address the immediate needs, connect women with community resources, and offer educational and leadership opportunities. And whereas the Women's Fund of El Paso celebrated its twentieth anniversary in twenty-twenty-four, and since its founding has awarded three hundred scholarships for more than four hundred thousand dollars to women in the Borderplex region. And whereas the organization's signature event, Power of the Purse, returns on February twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five, after a five-year hiatus and invites the public to attend at Saint Rogers Depot for a night of shopping to support the scholarship fund and honor El Paso philanthropist Dee Dee Rogers. And now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council of the city of El Paso that January twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five is recognized as Women's Fund of El Paso Day to recognize and honor the organization's work and continued dedication to empowering women in the Borderplex region through education, leadership, and community support. And the city of El Paso encourages all residents to support and celebrate the mission of the Women's Fund of El Paso and to participate in its events and initiatives that contribute to the advancement of women's opportunities and well-being in our community. So today is Women's Fund of El Paso Day, signed the Honorable Mayor, Renard Johnson.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Representative Acevedo, thank you so much for recognizing the Women's Fund. Thank you all, um, for this morning of recognition. Um, we are really proud of the work that we do, um, for twenty years now. Thinking of women who struggle to attain their educational goals. Um, many of the women that we serve stay in El Paso. They raise their families in El Paso. Um, they're teaching their children and looking to the future of brightening the economic future for El Paso, so we, sorry, I was, I ran in here. So we are, we are very grateful for the recognition and very excited that pop is back after a pandemic hiatus. We were really excited to plan this event and bring it back to the community. Um, it's a fun event for, for the community, but for a very, very good cause, so we, we thank you all this morning.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Sherilyn Sanchez, and I actually am a new board member. I'm so grateful for this opportunity to serve our community, um, to have the opportunity to work with these wonderful women. And again, I thank you so much for this opportunity to, um, come in this morning and receive this proclamation.
And thank you, guys.
And Celeste, I, I think you're collecting purses, aren't you?
We have actually maxed out.
Okay.
So we thank the entire community for coming together. Um, women across the community have hosted brunches and happy hours, and we have collected over three hundred purses this year already. So we are just, um, planning, and we are deep in planning as the event is February twenty-seventh at Saint Rogers Depot, so tickets will go live very soon in the next couple of days, so we hope that everybody will buy a ticket and come have some fun that evening.
Great. And thank you, guys, and thank you for what you do for the community.
Thank you, Mayor.
And the next proclamation is Big Brothers, Big Sisters.
Representative Rocha?
Thank you. I know we have a delegation from Big Brothers, Big Sisters here today. Thank you all for joining us. Whereas Big Brothers, Big Sisters volunteer mentors serve as dedicated, trusted friends and role models to positively impact a child's life forever by improving self-esteem, social relationships, confidence in school, and supporting through any emotional or behavioral problems and reducing incidences of delinquency. Whereas Big Brothers, Big Sisters is also proud to offer unique and valuable mental health first aid training to our participants as well as the community, along with other trainings and recreational group activities for mentors, children, and parents. Whereas Big Brothers, Big Sisters has expanded our youth, youth-serving mission to include young adults aged seventeen to twenty-four through our Big Futures Program, helping guide them toward higher education, employment, or enlistment with the supportive community partners like Workforce Solutions Borderplex, Western Tech, UTEP, and El Paso Community College. Whereas Big Brothers, Big Sisters has taken on the concerning issue of opioid abuse by providing training and programs for opioid prevention and awareness. Whereas innovative enhancements like school-based mentoring with partners at El Paso and Conotio Independent School Districts make our traditional one-to-one mentoring efforts even more accessible for youth and families that need them, thereby creating a life-changing ripple effect for more children, classrooms, schools, and communities. It also positively impacts a child's surrounding family members and the generations that follow. Whereas Big Brothers, Big Sisters collaborates with juvenile probation department and Creative Kids to provide artistic outlets and positive social interactions to El Paso's most vulnerable youth. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council of the city of El Paso that the month of January twenty-twenty-five shall be known as National Mentoring Month. Signed by Mayor Renard Johnson.
Thank you all so much for that presentation. It's an honor to have that read by you, Representative Rocha, and thank you, Mayor Johnson, for having us this morning. I know you have a special connection to our program, having been active, uh, with our events years in the past, um, and it's so wonderful to see you up here as mayor. Congratulations. Um, but we, as you saw, that was a lengthy, uh, proclamation because we do have our hands in a lot of activities. Um, our hallmark remains the one-to-one mentoring of youth, adults, one-to-one with one child. But we have broadened our reach to expand to other populations that desperately need the support. And so it really is such an honor to partner with community, um, advocates like JPD and, um, Creative Kids and Western Tech and UTEP and El Paso Community College to provide these resources to improve the lives of youth and young adults in the community. And we're just really honored for the city's, um, support and so proud to be here to present it today, and thank you so much for your ongoing support of our program.
Thank you so much. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna say, congratulations, and it's good to see, uh, so many of my, my friends, uh, there in the organization, and as you know, I've been a huge supporter of Big Brothers, uh, Big Sisters for many, many, many years, uh, taking part in the Dance for Kids Sakes and fundraisers that you guys have had, so congratulations on this day, and I know you have quite a few people there that we'd love to get them to introduce themselves.
Absolutely. So my name is Rebecca Romero. I'm the Development Director for Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and I will pass it on to my colleagues here to introduce themselves as well.
I'm Gio Contreras, and I'm a program specialist at Big Brothers, Big Sisters.
Hello, I am Dora Lade, and I am also program specialist.
Good morning. My name is Eliana Silva, and I'm a board member.
Good morning. My name is Daniel Chavari. I'm also a board member.
Good morning. My name is Richard Mohica. I'm a board member and treasurer of the Executive Board.
Good morning. My name is Cristela Riola. I am the Mental Health Program Manager.
We, we show up big because we're Big Brothers, Big Sisters. So thank you for having us this morning.
Thank you, guys, and congratulations.
All right. Yes, I can. All right. Ready? One, two, three. Couple more. Ready? One, two, three. Ready? One, two, three. Absolutely. Ready? One, two, three. Thank you all.
And the next proclamation is Women's Council of Realtors Day.
Representative, uh... Limón. Limón. Limón, please. This is a proclamation from the city of El Paso, whereas the Women's Council of Realtors, El Paso del Norte, has been a driving force in advancing professionalism, leadership, and empowerment within the real estate industry. And whereas since its inception, the Women's Council of Realtors, El Paso del Norte, has fostered a community of collaboration, support, and innovation, encouraging its members to excel both professionally and personally. And whereas the Women's Council of Realtors, El Paso del Norte, has empowered countless individuals through mentorship, education, and networking opportunities, advancing professionals servicing El Paso's community. And whereas its members are women from the real estate, mortgage insurance, and other related industries, uphold the highest standards of ethics and professionalism, exemplifying the integrity and dedication essential to serving communities with excellence. And whereas the installation of the twenty-twenty-five Women's Council of Realtors, El Paso del Norte, board and committee chairs marks a significant milestone in fostering the growth and influence of this dynamic organization. And whereas these members have committed themselves to upholding the highest standards of ethics, excellence, and service, contributing to the betterment of their communities and housing opportunities. And whereas the installation of these members signifies a continued expansion of a legacy of leadership, integrity, and empowerment within the real estate industry. Whereas the Women's Council of Realtors, El Paso del Norte, is a testament to the power of collective action, championing policies and practices that strengthen the real estate industry and affiliates create opportunities for growth and prosperity. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council of the city of El Paso that January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five is a day to celebrate and commend the newly installed members of the Women's Council of Realtors, El Paso del Norte, for their dedication, vision, and commitment. World's Council of Realtors Day, signed by the Honorable Mayor, Renard Johnson.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Thank you, City Representative Limón, for that, you know, awesome, beautiful proclamation. Thank you, Mayor, for sponsoring the proclamation. I believe this is the first time that the Women's Council of Realtors, El Paso Paso del Norte, has been ever, ever recognized at City Council. So this is history in the making. Ms. Limón, thank you so much as well. I am Dora Wajaca. I am the Chair for Community Outreach, and I have here today some very, very powerful women in our community that is, that are going to introduce themselves, but I want to start by introducing our Chair, Eileen Soto. Thank you.
Thank you, Dora. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor, for having us today. My name is Eileen Soto, and I am serving as a twenty-twelve, twenty-five president for the Women's Council of Realtors. I am with Clearview Realty, been in real estate for twenty, since twenty nineteen. And on behalf of the Women's Council of Realtors, I want to extend my heartfelt gratitude to Mayor Renard Johnson and the city of El Paso for this incredible honor and proclamation. We are a member strong with members from diverse industries, serving the commercial and housing needs. And org, our organization is dedicated to empowering leaders in the real estate industry, but our mission goes far beyond that. We are deeply committed to addressing housing issues in our communities, advocating for solutions that create opportunities for everyone to have a place to call home. We take great pride in making a positive difference, whether through supporting homeownership, for housing initiatives, fostering education, or giving back to our neighborhoods. Together, we aim to build stronger, more vibrant communities for the future. Thank you for recognizing the work we do and for this meaningful acknowledgement of our efforts. We are proud to serve El Paso, and we look forward to continuing our impact in this great city. Thank you. And now I, I would like to have everyone in our leadership team in attendance, please introduce themselves.
Good morning. Thank you. I'm Karen Polanco. I am the past president for two thousand and twenty-three, and I currently serve on the State Board as the State Treasurer for Texas.
Good morning. Thank you. Uh, my name is Edna Perez, and I am the twenty-twenty-five president-elect, and I am very grateful. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Carla Brown. I am the twenty-twenty-five Membership Director. I'm also with Cadence Lending Group and a retired Army Vet.
Good morning. My name is Sandra Canaba. I am a mortgage lender with ME Funding, and I'm very honored to be here. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Ashley Medina. I'm Esquire Officer with Sierra Title, and I am the twenty-twenty-five Event Chair. I am also a new proud owner of the Home Care Agency. Um, it is Healing Hearts at Home. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Laura Diaz, and I'm with Red Door Realty. And I am also the Events Director for twenty-twenty-five. And I am here quarterly inviting you, all of you, to attend our, uh, Women's Installation this Friday, um, January the twenty-fourth. Um, the installation will be at the Elmont, and we are looking forward to seeing everyone, um, to attend. We'll go ahead and send you an invitation to your offices. Thank you.
And finally, I'm Dora Wajaca. I'm a licensed agent, commercial and housing, Alberta Vete Allstate. I'm just taking the opportunity here for a free ad. And I'm the twenty-twenty-five Community Outreach Chair. Thank you so much. We will be extending an invitation. We hope to see you there. I know, Ms. Limón, you're very, very, very connected to housing issues. I think every one of you is. We have a housing initiative, strategic plan that we're gonna be calling your office to introduce, and we hope to gain your support. Thank you.
And Dora, let's make sure that this isn't the last time that, uh, your group is before City Council. I know we're making history, and and as many of you may know or may not know, I'm also a Realtor. Um, so it, it's, it is indeed an honor for me to have signed that proclamation, supporting my fellow Realtors, so congratulations.
So I have a minute left, so I'm just gonna tell you that I'm gonna hog it. No, we're having a women's conference in housing and real estate this coming spring, and we're gonna be very excited to meeting with all of you and letting you know our plans and, uh, and again, having your support. So thank you so much.
You got it. Thank you, guys.
Mayor, um, and Women's Council, this is Ivan Nino. I'm Representative for District Five. I did want to thank you and congratulate you for being here as well. I know, uh, previously we have collaborated with the Office of District Five. You all helped do a fundraiser for the El Paso Animal Services, and I'm looking to collaborating with you, and congratulate you again for, for, for this new leadership role that you are taking on. Thank you.
Right up here. And then, Council, can I get you guys to just scoot in a little bit for me, please? Thank you so much. All right, right this way. Ready? One, two, three. We've got like fifteen more. All right. Ready? One, two, three.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you. Grab it right there. Works. Two, three. Thank you. All right, ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Better move than them.
Better move than them. Great.
And the final proclamation this morning is El Paso Christmas Lights.
Representative Fierro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Mr. Loyah and his family walk on up to the podium, I'll start reading. Mr. Mayor, it's an honor to read this proclamation, and we all have special memories of holidays, whether it be Winter Fest, Mission Trail Posadas, or the Luminarias on Singet Drive. And I have to be honest with you. This is the first year that our family had the opportunity to visit the Christmas Light shows that Mr. Loyah and his family have, and it is part of our new holiday tradition. Thank you, Mr. Loyah. I'll start reading. Whereas the holiday season is a time of joy, community, and celebration, marked by traditions that bring people together to share in spirit of giving and gratitude. Whereas Fred Loyah and the Loyah family generously dedicated their time, creativity, and resources to organize the El Paso Christmas Lights Display, a showcase of holiday cheer that became a beloved tradition in our community. Whereas the El Paso Christmas Lights Display, hosted by Mr. Loyah and his family, bring together thousands of residents and visitors each year to experience a showcase of lights, music, holiday magic, creating unforgettable memories for families and individuals alike. Whereas the El Paso Christmas Lights Display uplifts the community during the holiday season, highlights the importance of coming together in celebration, and is also a reflection of the warmth and unity that draws families together, friends and neighbors together to create cherished memories, strengthen the bonds that make our community vibrant. Whereas the Loyah family, devotion to organizing and presenting this event, exemplifies their deep commitment to our El Paso community, inspiring joy, fostering unity, and embodying the spirit of giving during the holidays. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by our Mayor, Renard Johnson, and Council of the City of El Paso that the month of January 2025 be known as the El Paso Christmas Light Month. Congratulations, Mr. Loyah.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, City Council. We're deeply honored to be recognized in this fashion by such an illustrious body. We thank you for bringing us and inviting us here today and to reiterate the fact that the light show does belong to El Paso. That's why its name is El Paso Christmas Lights. It belongs to you. It belongs to the children of El Paso. And it is our deep pleasure to always put on the best that we can do of shows to give at least all of you something for Christmas to lighten your day, lighten your hearts, and lighten the season of Christmas. We are especially pleased when we see the children smile. And we know then, when we see those big smiles and the cheer that goes on and the love that is manifest among those families by the children and their smiles, that we did a good job. And we thank you for allowing us to do that because it's a work of love for everybody concerned. Without you, you know, the permits that you have to issue us, it couldn't be done without all of my collaborators here, who I'll ask them to introduce themselves as well. It couldn't be done. It is a work. I mean, we have a lot of kids at, you know, high schoolers and above, a twenty-year-old. A lot of young people give up a whole season of Christmas to bring joy and pleasure to all of El Paso in that light show. And again, we thank you for making it possible. We are honored to be here, and we thank you for that. I'll ask some of my colleagues to introduce themselves. Of course, we'll start with my son, who has a very important function in the light show behind the scenes because he pays for it.
Mr. Fierro, thank you very much. I have a little story. When I was told that Renard Johnson was running for mayor, you know, I looked kind of confused. You know, kind of like, like, you know, Renard Johnson's running for mayor? You know, I looked confused. And he goes, "Yeah, he says he knows you." "Oh," I said, "you mean Skeet." "Oh, yeah, Skeet will make a great mayor." And he will make a great mayor because he will move things in El Paso, Texas. Mayor Renard Johnson, thank you very much.
Thank you, my friend. Thank you.
I'm Scott Brennan. I'm with SRV Pro. We work under his direction to put the show together for him every year.
Scott is a lighting engineer who puts up the lights. Fundamental for a light show.
Good morning, hey, Renard. My name is Jorge Verones, and I am the Chief Information Officer for Fred Lloyd Insurance. And fortunately or unfortunately, this project falls under my umbrella. So we're very much involved in it. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Adora Martinez. I'm the Project Coordinator for El Paso Christmas Lights.
Good morning, my name is Letizia Rivera, and I work under Mr. Fred Loyah Jr. and Fred Loyah Sr.
Representative Fierro.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just one last thing. It would not be a celebration of the Christmas Lights if my mentor, Mr. Hernandez, wouldn't be here to celebrate along with you and the Loyah family and your team. So I just want to recognize Mr. Hernandez for being here in the audience. And again, I was very proud to be one of the forty thousand-plus people that stood in line and had some great hot chocolate and got to... They wouldn't let me sit on Santa Claus's lap. I don't know why. But thank you again for all you do for our community.
Yeah, and I just want to say a few things. It's very humbling to see my dear friends there. I have known the Loyah family for many, many years. I go back to when we, you know, me and Fred grew up a little bit in the northeast side of El Paso. Store number one with Mr. Loyah on the corner of Dyer and Rushing. So I've known him for many, many years. They know, obviously, my nickname there that they shared. So, but I consider Mr. Loyah and his family, family. And I cannot thank you enough, Mr. Loyah, Fred, and the entire family for what you do for El Paso because I had the opportunity of coming out to see the light show this year, the three different versions, and the amount of smiles that were on the kids' faces and the amount of smiles that were on the adults' faces. You have truly created a memory for this community that will live on for many, many, many years. And I want to thank you guys for... Because it's not an easy task. And when you go out there, anyone can see, you know, from the lighting show and the production that is done there. I've got to say, it's probably... Well, I will say this. It's the best light show in all of the U.S. And most people may not know, but you did win the Christmas Light Show, and you put El Paso on the map with your light show. So we cannot thank you enough for what you do, and it's good to see my family and my friends there getting this proclamation. So thank you.
Mayor, just a moment to also recognize the Loyah family, Mr. and Mrs. Loyah, Fred and Maria, incredible supporters of this community. But I'm going to take a special privilege, if it's okay with you, Fred Jr., one of my former students at Hank's High School, just a few years ago, verdad? Not too long. Thank you very much and congratulations to you all. Thank you.
All right, well, have you guys take just a little step over this way for me, please? Representative Nino, can I get you to come on the other side of Mayor Johnson, please? Right there, that's perfect. Representative Limon, can I get you to come in just a little bit? Perfect. Representative Fierro as well? You'll be good right next to her, I promise. A little bit, there we go. Representative Limon, just a little bit more over there. Perfect. There we go, that's beautiful. All right, ready? One, two, three. I have seventy-seven phones down here. Just a moment. All right, ready, one, two, three.
She wasn't joking. She's got seventy-seven phones down here.
Just keep holding those smiles. Ready, one, two, three.
Of course.
If I drop these, I'm not liable. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Frye.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, per the rules of order, no use of personal cellular devices, no personal communication should take place on the dais while the meeting is in session. Once you obtain the floor from the mayor, you will have up to ten minutes for debate and may speak twice per item. Please speak into the microphone and refrain from side conversations at the dais while the meeting is in session. For those of you joining us virtually, please mute your microphones to reduce any background noise. That brings us to the Consent Agenda. All matters listed under the Consent Agenda will be considered by City Council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion unless separate discussion is requested by council members. Prior to the vote, members of the audience may ask questions regarding items on the Consent Agenda when the vote has been taken. If an item has not been called out for separate discussion, the item has been approved. Council may, however, reconsider any item at any time during the meeting. Mayor Protem.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda with the following revision, Page 11, Item 31, revised per purchasing and strategic sourcing. There is a typo. It should read City of El Paso and Jordan Foster.
So we have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Representative Limon?
Mayor, I'd like to request that we pull Item 21, 22, and 23 for discussion. Twenty-one, 22, and 23, please, to the regular agenda, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Mayor, we do have public comment on Item 9.
Okay.
We have Ms. Lisa Turner. And Item 9 is a resolution to authorize the expenditure of Districts 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 discretionary funds in an amount not to exceed $6,000 each to fund their participation in the El Paso Chambers, El Paso Days, and Austin event.
Good morning, Ms. Turner.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Another chilly day. At least we don't have a blizzard like New Orleans. I rise to speak on this item because you're spending $36,000 of taxpayers' money. So more than a quorum of our city council can go to Austin and party. I see this is a waste of money because about all we ever get out of Austin are the moldy breadcrumbs that they didn't sweep up. There are things that you can do if you want to do something, such as, Mayor, you need to get the Border Mayors Association back alive again. Make El Paso and Juarez the home for the border mayors. Because, see, nobody ever comes here and spends their tax, the tax dollars of their citizens in our city. So it's high time we take steps to make sure that people start doing this. To me, it's a waste of time. You waste your time. You waste our tax dollars because we never get squat out of Austin. We get the crumbs that have been molded that they forgot to sweep up. That's what El Paso gets. We're a Hispanic community. They don't like us. Let's be honest. All the white folks along I-35 and east of it don't like us here. I mean, I saw that when the gas company sent their rape person in charge. She was dressed like she was going to be cleaning the toilet. She was disrespectful to our mayor. She was disrespectful to members of our city council. And that's how they think of us. And I'm sick and tired of it. I did my best not to use a word that rhymes with witch when I got up to speak, to defend my mayor and defend my council. I'm sick and tired of this stuff. I want every one of you to have a backbone. I want every one of you to stand up for my city and stand up for everybody who lives here. That's what I want out of my city. I don't want wasting my money in Austin when we don't get anything. If you want to party, party here in El Paso. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Ms. Frye.
Yes, Mayor, there was a motion made by Mayor Protem Chavez, seconded by Representative Canales to approve the Consent Agenda as revised.
Okay, any more discussion? Call for the vote?
On that motion, call for the vote. Representative Nino? Thank you. And the voting session? And that motion passes unanimously? Mayor, would you like to take the three items that were moved from consent to regular at this time? Okay, that would be Item Number 21. And Item 21 is a property tax refund in excess of $2,500.
Representative Limon?
Thank you. Mayor, I requested this item... This is a learning process, so I hope that you'll bear with me. These, these items... The overpayment was made on the dates that are listed here on the backup. For example, number one, was that overpayment made November 5th of 2024? Okay, that's the date that the amount was overpaid.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. I got that one now. Let me go to the next one. And so the next one, which I found...
An item, are you talking, speaking about Item 22, Ms.?
Twenty-two.
Item 22 is a property tax refund in excess of the three-year limit.
And that's my question. If it's supposed to be a three-year limit, why do we have these two? And so the overpayment was made in September of 2021 for the first one and October of 2021. Did they not realize that they had made an overpayment? Or how did that happen?
Good morning, Nisa Oaxa on this, Tax Deputy Administrator. So what we do is we send them an application, letting them know that there's a refund for whatever reason. They may not submit it quite on time. And so when they exceed that time limit by a property tax code, we're required to come and present it to you, and that's what happened here.
And so who found out? Did the taxpayer realize they had made an overpayment?
Typically, it's us at the tax office, and then we send them a letter with an application saying, "You've overpaid, please submit your application."
Well, that's good. One is low, sixty-eight dollars, but the other one's like seven-hundred and six dollars, what a generous gift, refund. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, I'm sorry, twenty, item twenty-three?
Item twenty-three is a notation of special projects discretionary fund expenditures and P-card transactions for the period of November twenty-first through December twentieth of twenty-twenty-four, per Mayor, City Council Representatives, City Attorney's Office, and City Manager's Office and staff.
Point of order, are we taking all three at the same time, or are we doing individual votes on them?
There has been no motion on any of the items.
Okay, so we're just going through all of them and not voting on them, or...
It's up to council whether they want to take them together or take them individually.
I'll make the motion when I'm finished, I have one more.
Well, yeah, but I'm, I'm just asking, because usually we go one by one, and then we could vote on it. So I, I think we need the clarity to make sure that we are doing all three, or we're doing one by one.
Okay, does it matter if we do them all three this time at least, since I've already done two out of three?
It's up to the chair.
Representative, you will do the last one, and then we'll vote on those three.
Thank you very much. So, Nicole, I have a question for you. I noticed on District Seven, there was a SAMs Club renewal that was done November twenty-fifth of twenty-twenty-four. Is that a membership for District Seven or for the representative?
So the way that, Nicole Cody, Managing Director, so as we work with SAMs, and it's an important point that you bring up, is that currently the SAMs membership is with the individual, but they can transfer it to a different individual within the district. And we're actually working on coordinating with SAMs since their process and policies have changed. And I'm working with Ms. Magarita on this item as well, to be able to look at it as an organization, so that way when we do have these transfers, the individual doesn't have to go in, in person and ask. Because right now, the process is you physically have to go in person, ensure that it is, of course, tax exempt, and then the membership transfers to the new individual.
Okay. There was a second line item, though, that it's a credit versus a charge. And so I'm wondering, did, did our, the discretionary money get reimbursed? It's right, the mixed item.
Yes, ma'am. So when you see a credit listed, it's because it's a reimbursement to the account, it's a credit from the business or company to the discretionary funds.
So right now, that membership is no more?
So it was a credit for a different purchase.
Ah, for a different purchase.
So there's a purchase that matches that exact amount that had happened in the previous period.
Okay, and you'll share with us how to go about the membership?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Yes, ma'am, I will.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve items twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three.
Okay, we have a motion to approve items twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Pry, call for the vote.
Yes, sir, there was a motion made by Representative Limon, seconded by Representative Canales, and this is to approve items twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. On that motion, call for the vote. And the voting session, and that motion passes unanimously. We now turn to page ten. The next item is number twenty-nine on the regular agenda. Item twenty-nine is discussion in action to direct the City Manager and City Attorney to conduct a review of all city boards and commissions. This item was placed by Representative Chavez Rocha Entrejo.
Representative Chavez, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. So as part of our onboarding process, we were given some documents regarding board and commission appointments. It has come to our attention that there has not been a revision of these boards and commissions for at least ten years. And it has also come to our attention that some of these boards and commissions have not met quorum in a, in a while. And so all we're asking is for the city attorney and the city manager to review these boards, see if there's any possibility to perhaps combine them, so that, you know, whatever, whomever we are going to be assigning, we're making sure that, that they are meeting quorum and that they are serving our community in an efficient way. Thank you, Mayor.
Representative Rocha?
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it. We just need to ensure that our boards and commissions are functioning effectively and meeting their internal goals, as well as using the city resources wisely. We want to make sure that we serve the interests of the community as, as best possible through these boards and commissions. And so that is the reason for, for this request that we have made. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Representative Limon?
Thank you very much for bringing this item up. Prior to being elected, I served on two boards. One over two years. We met twice, and it was precisely because of that, lack of a quorum. Yet the other board, we met on a monthly basis. And it, it's really disheartening when you can't meet, because you can't meet the quorum. So I, I really appreciate this and certainly look forward to seeing what we can find out and how we can better this. It, how important it is to appoint people that really want to serve. It's, it can be an inconvenience in getting to a meeting, but it's important. And so therefore, it's important to have people that really want to serve. Thank you very much for doing this.
Representative Boyer?
Thank you. Thank you. It is to make sure that we maintain the effectiveness of the, of the boards and make sure they're, we're inclusive to the community and making sure that we're staying with the needs currently for the needs of the community and our residents. Thank you.
Representative, look at my little chart here. Birthday guy.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I also thank my colleagues for bringing this up. I, I think that one, one thing that I just wanted to kind of suggest on the topic broadly is that there's some boards that have just been dormant, and we don't have them outlined as dormant. And so periodically, we get the, the media asking us, like, hey, you have three vacancies, what's going on here? And it's really hard to just kind of say, well, that board is dormant, but I understand that when you go to the, the website, it just says vacancies, right? And so you're just going to pick up on all the vacancies. So I think we really need to clarify that. Or if the board is only going to meet when needed, and there might be a board that hasn't met in one or two years, I think we also have to really outline that to, to make it a little bit more understanding. And I think overall, what I also want to see is, when we are not meeting quorum, I think we need to have some sort of system that tells us, hey, this meeting is not meeting quorum because your appointee is not coming to the meeting. And so we have so many of these boards that we can't catch every single person that isn't meeting until somebody from the board calls and says, hey, we haven't been able to meet because of this. And then that's when I start kind of asking questions. Also, I just lost somebody on the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee, and I wasn't notified about it. I just kind of found out, like, here are all your vacancies randomly. And I think that's a really important committee to have, and so I had no, no idea that my appointee had resigned. So I, I think there's, there's a lot of work to do here, and I'm, I'm really thankful for, for this item, and I'm hoping that we could get to a better place on just communication and stuff like that, so we're able to move forward. And then obviously, the, the Youth Advisory Committee is going to be really key to our strategic plan. So that board has just kind of been sitting there with no appointees, and I think we really need to move this forward as a council to start thinking of somebody in high school, preferably a freshman that could probably serve throughout those four years, for us to add to that committee and really activate it and get things done through that committee. So thank you for, for bringing this up.
Thank you, Representative Acevedo. Any more discussion? Ms. Pry, do we need a, an action on this one?
Yes, it is an action item, Mayor.
I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion and a second, no further discussion?
Mayor, we do have public comment from Ms. Turner. Good morning, Ms. Turner.
Again, good morning, Mayor and Council. My name's Lisa Turner. I am presently a member of the El Paso, Texas Women's Rights Commission. I have been asked by mayors and city council members to sit on boards and commissions, five of them, PSB Selection Committee, City Manager Selection Committee, City Charter Rewrite, Women's Rights Commission, Public Utility Regulation Board. They've come, asked me to serve. And one of the things that we need from you all is to be sure that the people that you appoint want to do the work and are not there just to have something on their resume. We would also, from my perspective, like to have the ability to set up the number, if we want to have an in-person meeting, and basically your hybrid meeting, that we can have even only three people in, in person and then rest via that. The number of being able to change our quorums, to adjust. The other things are, we need a process, like you all have, you all have excused absences. We need something like that for our boards. So if you miss three or four times, then that should be an automatic disqualification if you haven't been an excused absence. It's frustrating as a board member, because we were supposed to have a meeting last night. We were supposed to have five people here and the rest on the computer. Only two of us showed up for the meeting. We have a lot of things that we want to get done for the women who work for the city, but we can't get it done if people don't show up. So, and I know life gets in the way of everybody, but finding appropriate times where people's schedules can mix, or taking the hybrid model and readjusting it so we can get a quorum. So, you know, I don't know, you'll have to work, I guess, with Ms. Niemann to figure out just exactly what we can and cannot do. But, you know, every time my city calls, I go to work. And it's frustrating when people don't show up. So, you know, anything y'all can do to help us get that way? Oh, by the way, I believe your Housing Commission has substitutes. So when the main board member's not there, they can have the substitute come in and substitute for them, so they can have a quorum. So I don't know if that's something that can be applied across all boards, and if that's something that you all would want to do. So, those are the things that, you know, just come to mind as someone who sits on the board. Thank you.
And thank you, Ms. Turner, and thank you for your commitment to the City of El Paso and all that you're doing for us. So, Ms. Pry, we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Call for the vote?
Yes, sir, the motion was made by Mayor Protem Chavez, seconded by Representative Acevedo, and this is to approve the direction on item twenty-nine. On that motion, call for the vote. And the voting session, and that motion passes unanimously. That brings us to item number thirty on the agenda. And this is the introduction of an ordinance, and this is for item thirty, it's an introduction.
Move to approve? Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on this item? Call for the vote?
Yes, the motion was made by Representative Niño. Acevedo, thank you. Seconded by Representative Limon to approve the introduction of the ordinance on item thirty. On that motion, call for the vote. And the voting session, and that motion passes unanimously. Item thirty-one is discussion in action on the request that the City Manager is authorized to execute the design build documents considered to be the agreement between the City of El Paso and Jordan Foster Construction LLC for the project known as twenty-twenty-four dash zero-two-seven-two R, Advanced Manufacturing District, in an initial amount of two million eight hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixteen cents.
Move to approve? Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion on this item? See, and then call for the vote?
We do have public comment from Ms. Turner on this item.
Okay.
Again, good morning, Mayor and Council. First question is in reference to the fifty thousand dollars. If something comes up, is this fifty thousand dollars a one-time thing for the life of the contract, or can it pop up multiple times during the life of the contract?
Good morning, Claudia Garcia, with Purchasing and Strategic Sourcing Department. They intend to pay this additional money, it is just in case additional work comes up to, to that amount.
So it's, it's a one-time? Okay, thank you.
And the next thing is, I hate to bring this subject up, but campaign contributions. And I think this would have to go to Ms. Newman to find out if any of you who took campaign contributions from Mr. Foster would be eligible to vote on this. And the only reason I ask is because I saw so much money going into city council and mayor races. It bothers me. Honestly, it bothers me, to see that much money coming in. Seventy-five thousand dollar donations, hundred thousand dollar donations, money. I'm not the only citizen who's wondering about my council and my mayor. And who you actually work for. I'm not trying to be offensive, I'm just letting you know what a lot of people in the city are thinking. So, is there a problem with campaign contributions in voting?
Mayor, per the rules of order, when a member of council comes to speak, they address the council. We're not necessarily required to answer the question, but I will answer the question. The council passed the ordinance that does not prohibit the council from voting despite your receiving campaign contributions. Some of you have chosen to disclose prior to voting when a member of the public comes to speak or receive a benefit from the council, a contract, permit, et cetera. You can do that, but you're not prohibited from voting as a result of a campaign contribution.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Niemann.
Okay, so, I'll keep it to myself. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Turner.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. We have a motion and a second, we got some more discussion, Representative Acevedo?
Thank you, Mayor, I just had a question for Ms. Niemann on what you were saying. Don't we have a rule in place that we disclose? So can you just put that on the record, please?
You disclose the receipt of a campaign contribution prior to voting. The only time you're allowed, required to recuse yourself is if the person receiving the benefit from the council is a relative of yours and you have a conflict of interest. But receipt of campaign contributions do not necessarily create a conflict of interest.
And, and we disclose it and then fill out a form, right?
Right. When you have a conflict of interest, you notify the city clerk, you fill out an affidavit, and then you get up and leave the room.
Okay, thank you.
Representative Limon?
I did not receive any funding from Foster, Jordan, or anybody like that. Thank you.
Any more discussion on this item? We have a motion and a second, call for the vote?
Yes, sir, the motion was made by Representative Canales, seconded by Representative Fierro to approve item thirty-one. It was, did you, yes, thank you. On that motion, call for the vote. And the voting session, and that motion passes unanimously. That brings us to item thirty-two. And item thirty-two is discussion in action that the Managing Director of Purchasing and Strategic Sourcing Department be authorized to issue purchase orders to EPAC Systems, Inc., the sole authorized distributor of Bergman's waste and recycling equipment in North America, to include all parts for the mobile roller crusher for Environmental Services Department for a one-time purchase for an estimated amount of one hundred and seventy-two thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars. This contract will add this equipment for the customer collection station operations.
Motion approved?
There's a motion and a second, any discussion on this item? Representative Canales, did I see you?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify for the public, because somebody asked me, I, this is separate and apart from the glass recycling machine crusher, correct?
Nicholas Yubara, Director of Environmental Services, yes, this is a separate item. This was already planned for FY twenty-five. What it pretty much does is in the containers, it, you know, when people dump material at the citizen collection stations, it's, it's not compacted. This allows us to go from two to three tons per container to five to six, which minimizes the trips for our truck drivers to take those to the landfill and be more efficient at the citizen collection stations. But for the glass crusher, we do, we are planning to have that put in our FY twenty-six budget.
Yep, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, that's all.
All right, Representative Fierro?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you very, very much. We had the opportunity to tour the, the plant in, in our district, and it was an absolutely amazing facility. I think we saw one of the machines in, in, in action, and it's just amazing, everything that you and your team do out in those collection stations, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Representative Limon?
Since you brought it up, the glass crushing machine is still active and working?
No, ma'am, so this past November, we had a catastrophic failure with the, the engine. You know, over the years, our... You know, over the years, our staff have been able to maintain it and keep it together. But unfortunately, due to the age of the machine and the failure that the engine had, we weren't able to repair it anymore. So it's currently, the program's not going on right now, but like I said, we're putting budget for the FY '26 to get it started up in September next year again.
Very good. I'm saddened to see that, but yeah, it's been quite a few years. We brought that in, the concept. Ellen Smythe was extremely helpful in setting that up. It came through a program, through the COG, and it was the best thing around. So I look forward to seeing it return sooner rather than later.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Limón. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? Ms. Prime?
Yes, the motion was made by Representative Fierro, seconded by Representative Niño to approve item 32. On that motion, call for the vote. In the voting session, and that motion passes unanimously. That brings us to item 33, and item 33 is a public hearing of an ordinance amending Title 12, Chapter 12.88, Section 12.88.200, Schedule Restrictions on Parking in Residential Districts, Subsection Zone O, No Parking Anytime Towaway Zone. And this is to add several streets from East San Antonio, Gateway Boulevard South, Finley Avenue, Stevens Street, and South Lata Street.
Move to approve.
So there's a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Call for the vote?
Yes, the motion was made by Representative Acevedo, seconded by Representative Fierro. This is to adopt the ordinance on item 33. On that motion, there's no public comment. On that motion, call for the vote. In the voting session, and that motion passes unanimously. The final item is number 34, and this is discussion in action to approve budget transfer to increase FY 2025 confiscated funds and appropriations for a total of $460,300 in state and federal confiscated funds.
Is there a motion to approve this item?
Motion approved.
Is there any discussion? Representative Canales?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's the third year I'm telling you the same thing, Chief. I don't want you in any way to think that this is funding that I don't, that I don't want your officers to have, but I disagree with the concept of spending confiscated funds just conceptually. It has nothing to do with the particular expenditures that you're looking to make. And there, you know, I would support making those expenditures in a different way, but I do have a moral conflict with the way that municipalities spend confiscated funds. And so I plan not to support this item, but I wanted to make sure that I made that clear to you. It has nothing to do with the particular expenditures that your department's looking to make.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Ms. Prime, call for the vote?
Yes, sir. The motion was made by Representative Fierro, seconded by Representative Limón to approve item 34. On that motion, call for the vote. In the voting session, and that motion passes 7 to 1 with Representative Canales voting a, the remainder of council voting a. The motion carries.
And Chief, before you leave, Chief, I just want to say thank you to you and your team for, we were going through some trying times here in our community, and I want to thank you for your leadership, your men and women in uniform. You're doing a really good job. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. No, we have some great cops and civilian staff that are committed to the safety and security of our city.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I move to recess till 12?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to recess the city council meeting until noon. For call to the public, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And the regular city council meeting is now in recess at 10:13 a.m. and will reconvene at noon for call to the public. Thank you.
Ms. Prime, we're ready.
Is there a motion to reconvene?
Motion.
There's a motion in a second to reconvene the regular city council meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And the meeting is back in session at 12 noon. We now go to call to the public. The El Paso City Council is a local government body charged with serving the citizens and the meetings must be focused on the meeting at charge. City council meetings are public meetings under the Texas Open Meetings Act. Public comment is an accommodation and not a requirement of city council. All persons in attendance are expected to display civility and decorum that is respectful to other person without the use of insulting, profane, threatening, or abusive language. Public comment will not be used for personal attacks against a person or group's character or integrity which are not pertinent to city business nor may any member of the public use this forum for political statements or campaigning. Please note that during call to the public, the city council may not deliberate or decide any subject that is not on the agenda, however, council may propose that a topic brought forth be posted on a future agenda. This afternoon, we have two members of the public signed up to speak. The first person is Elizabeth Crawford. Her topic is January 27th Holocaust Remembrance Day. Good afternoon, Ms. Crawford. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, thank you. Good afternoon. As we know, January 27th is International Holocaust Remembrance Day. What a precious sight it was to watch the sum of the October 7th hostages being freed. On a personal note, January 27th is also the anniversary of the Lord taking my mom to heaven, January 27th, 2011. Actually, this is very fitting as my mom, though not born or biologically Jewish, dearly loved Israel and the Jewish people. In light of the current world events, my friends and I grieve and pray almost every day for Israel, for Gaza, for those devastated by the events of October 7th and the ongoing war. It's been tough to watch all the suffering among the various people groups in the Middle East. I would like to read a beautiful passage from God's holy word. When an elderly Jewish believer sent me and had the awesome privilege of welcoming Jesus, the Christ child, into this world. Luke 2. From my eyes have seen my salvation, which you have prepared before the face of all people, a light to lighten the gentiles and the glory of your people, Israel. God has an amazing, amazing future ahead for Israel. After an unspeakable national repentance, God will one day use them to be a light and blessing to the whole earth, whole earth on a magnitude never before seen or imagined. In Luke 2, the gospel speaks of, quote, "knowledge of salvation unto his people," to God's people, "by the remission, the forgiveness of their sins, through the tender mercy of our God whereby the sunrise, the day spring from on high has visited us, to give light to them that sit in darkness and in the shadow of death, to guide our feet into the way of peace." As it says on the Juarez Mountains, "The Bible is the truth." Read it. God does not finish with Israel, and God does not finish with his plan to one day bless all the nations of the earth through Israel. On January 27th, we look back to the sadness of the Holocaust on this day. But as my mom used to say, can you imagine her face would light up with a glow as she would think of the future of what is one day going to be in Israel? Isaiah, chapter 35. "And the redeemed of the Lord shall return and come a singing unto Zion, and everlasting joy upon their heads; they shall obtain joy and gladness, and sorrow and mourning shall flee away." Thank you so much. Hope you have a good day. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford.
The next speaker is Ms. Lisa Turner. Ms. Turner's topic is 380 agreement with company whose owner hates our city. Good afternoon, Ms. Turner.
Good afternoon, Ms. Turner.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. August 3rd, 2019, we know what happened then. An individual filled with hate, with the talk of invasion from people south of the border, came to our city, killed 23 people in a Walmart. Friends, family members, coworkers, neighbors. And now, this 380 agreement with Meta that we've entered into last year. The CEO, Mark Zuckerberg, has decided that such talk is now allowable, especially in the areas of immigration. Individuals who are LGBT. Those slurs that are usually reserved for people who are Mexican-American, Black, LGBTQ are now okay on their platform. We entered into an agreement with this corporation, okay? This corporation has also stated, Mr. Zuckerberg also stated, he is cutting all ties with businesses to provide Meta with services that are diverse. In other words, women-owned, minority-owned, LGBT, Black, anybody that's not white male. Now, we've been given a challenge here. We can just accept the dollars, accept the business, and go on and be treated like dirt. Or we can take up the challenge and say, no, since you have already declared that you do not want to do business with, quote, "a diverse business," which basically the PSB is, this city is, because it's our assets, then the contract is now void. Whether that, I don't know, that legal will have to go on to that. But we have been given a choice to take up the mantle of leadership, to fight this. We can do that. We can do it with integrity, or we could just go with the money. Integrity means, more often than not, you stand alone, because everybody else is taking the easy way out. So, and standing alone and standing up for something that you believe in is difficult, it's hard. So, as a member of this community, I don't think having a business like that is welcomed in our community. Anybody that's willing to allow people to attack us based upon whether we came from south of the border, whether we're LGBT, regardless of our skin color, is unacceptable. My God, all we have is a little dirty ditch here with water in it every now and then.
Thank you, Ms. Turner.
And that's the only difference between us and Juarez. That's our family across the street, across that river. So, please, send them down the road.
Thank you, Ms. Turner.
Council, that concludes call to the public. There's a motion in a second to adjourn the regular city council meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And the regular city council meeting for Wednesday, January 22nd, 2025 is adjourned at 12:07 PM. Thank you, Council.